All right, good afternoon, everybody. It's Monday, May sixteenth, twenty twenty-two at six P. M., and I'll call to order the Free Town Board Selecting Meeting. This meeting will be recorded and the video will be available on our town YouTube page. Is anyone else recording this today? No? Okay, great. First order of business is actually gonna go up to the Board of Health, so Jared, please.
All right, thank you. All right, agenda item number one, discussion vote on the variance request for ten Chavano Ave. I believe we have gentleman here from Indiania. How you doing?
Did you sneak in? I'm like, I'm not gonna do Rick's job.
I figured he was the guy based on what he was carrying.
Any place to set this?
Hold it with me, Luena, let me do that. I can hold it.
All right. This was septic repair.
Just point of order, Mr. Chairman, it's a public hearing, you just call it the order, please.
Okay, I'll call to order the public hearing.
Thank you, sir.
It's a septic repair for a three-bedroom house. The existing system is a pit that's located about this portion of the yard, it's Denise Avenue and Chavano Ave, around this way. This neighbor right here at number three Denise Avenue had about a fifty-foot setback. Is it Life?
Yes.
Yes. There we go. The existing system was about fifty feet from your well, right? The repair, we're gonna get further ways, but it's still less than a hundred feet, that's why you were notified. I think we ended up with eighty-six feet. To Mr. Life's well. There's another party across the street that's over the line in Lakeville at five Chavano Ave. I don't know if that party is here. Okay, and you were over, it was a hundred feet or more before, but we're trying to get a balance between these two wells, all right? And to throw it all back on Mr. Life at fifty feet, what we've done is try to get it in between, so I think we ended up with ninety-two feet to your well. In addition to that, the owners of the house also can't get a hundred feet away, all right, so they've got it there about eighty-five feet. So the three of you are all in that area, high eighty to ninety feet roughly from that, from that, from the new leachant facility. The leachant facility will have a full four-foot groundwater separation, so there's no request for any variance there to reduce the ability of the soil to try to clean that effluent before it hits the water table. So that was good. We do have a, actually it's a five-foot water table, I should say, because this was a, no, I'm sorry, it's a three-minute percolation rate. So it's a four-minute water table, four-foot water table depth. The only other variance we have is to the street line, because we're trying to set this and try to, try to balance out. There's a little Solomon thing there, cutting the baby in pieces, you know, between the warrig parrots. We're trying to figure out the best place we could set this where we would, we would have it kinda equidistant from the three wells affected, which is the owner's well and the two neighbors' well. So that's what we're trying to do. So. That's okay, I appreciate this with the chair or not.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Joe, yeah.
It should be a hundred feet from all these.
Yes.
So having that less, what does that do? My water, Collins' water?
I think if you had the existing system less than a hundred feet, which again, it was a, it was a, not a currently Title V compliant system was in there, the one that was failed, you're certainly gonna see an improvement, all right? Your neighbor had a hundred feet, we're cutting it down to about ninety-two feet. I don't think that's gonna have much of an effect here. If we knew, if we knew the hydrology of the area and which way groundwater flow was going, we tend to think it's going towards a pond, it should be moving groundwater towards Long Pond in an easterly direction, which would mean that neither one of you really is gonna get that much impact. It would be this well here, the owner's well, would see the most impact, because the groundwater flow should be moving in their direction. We can't get further away from them. We're trying to do that by getting the six-foot setback as opposed to the ten-foot. But there's something we can't tell you, because we don't know what's happening deep underground with the, you know, with the groundwater flow.
I don't know what depth my well is, but does that make a difference, how deep my water would be?
A shallow well would probably be more impacted than a deep well. I often tell people, if you've got a well that's two-hundred-and-fifty feet deep, your water's probably not, nothing to do with your neighbor, it could be coming from Brockton. So you just don't know. Depending on the types of ledges that you have, there were drops, you know, so much per mile, or drops so many feet per mile. But again, it's, you don't know what type of ledge you have, what the condition of that ledge is, and typically a deep well will be down in that ledge. You have a shallow well, though, aren't you?
I don't know.
Oh, do you have a pump in the basement?
Yeah, pump is, pump is in the well.
Then if the pump's in the well, then you have a deep well, all right? Because a shallow well with a pump in the basement can't pump deeper than twenty-five feet, okay? There's laws of physics, just limited to that, okay?
Where could I find a depth?
You contact my office. If you contact the Board of Health, that is subject to us actually having the records on file, some of the older homes and some of the older. Don't count them, but certainly I'll hand, I've got a card here.
Well, that's true.
Certainly contact my office and we can try to find the information.
What I wanna say, though, is that the primary thing is that what's going in here is a new Title V system thinking. This is a new compliant Title V system, so a Title V compliant system, fifty feet from your well would be better than a non-compliant system on a fifty-foot well. That's the way I look at it, okay? So this is, this one gets the full ability of the soil tripling underneath with full groundwater separation to allow that effluent to clean up, to be cleaned up by the bacteria in the soil before it hits the water.
It wouldn't be necessary to have a system. I was just going on the computer just to go and see what all this stuff means. Still the main ingredient, but anyways. Sometimes they have a pre-treatment.
You don't, there's no need for pre-treatment required here. If you had, what you would pick up, if there were an issue here, you would pick up E. coli, all right? That would be the indicator that you'd have in a water test. If you have that in a water test, then, then you have to try to figure out, is it this system? Was it the old system? Is it the new system? Is it your system, okay? Again, without knowing the direction the groundwater flows are going, it's gonna be hard to figure that out. But at least you can figure out what that is. A lot of times, contamination can even be within the well itself, right? I've had it, I have a shallow well in my home, and I had a crack in the cover, and believe it or not, a snake got in there, got down inside, and we started getting a little bit of a smell in the water, and I pumped it all down. And I saw this thing float, I had to go down and clean it all up, dig it out and clean it. And then we flushed it, of course, with chlorine, so you know, chlorine flush, and then of course you smell that, goes to your pipes for a few days. But that, that will clean everything out if you have that type of situation. Again, Kevin could give you advice on how to do that properly.
I do test my well water every, every other year, I do test.
Well, the E. coli would be the indicator, okay? The other ramp you're talking about for pre-treatment are typically for, if you have iron, or if you have, you know, excessive hardness in the water, if your pH needs adjustment, those are the types of pre-treatments you put on with a water treatment system. But for bacterial, it's typically, if you have E. coli, you try to flush out your system to try to eliminate the source of that E. coli.
Well, being, it appears it's not gonna happen until it's over, it sounds very good system. If my water change by testing, or should I just call it about my health, this is happening? Is this reference to the new septic system, or why is it changing?
I would say, if you didn't have an issue before, the new system is not gonna give you an issue now, because it's gonna be better in your case, all right? You're going from fifty feet to about eighty-five feet of setback, okay? We are creeping yours a little bit from a hundred down to ninety-two, but we're going from a non-compliant system to a compliant system.
And I just had my pump replaced, I know it's a very deep well, so.
Okay, so the chances are, you're not gonna see any impact from this if you have a deep well, and I think the same thing with yours also. But again, the Title V doesn't recognize the difference between deep wells and shallow wells, so they, every well gets a hundred-foot setback. They really, the shallow wells are the ones that really need it more than the deep wells, because like I say, your well, your water is not coming from your neighbor's yard, okay? It's coming from miles away.
Do you have any other questions?
No. Now, I don't think I need to ask a question, but if it was, is there a treatment of putting, putting in the well water because of change? You know, it's, right now, there's no, nothing going into it to change it.
The only treatment I was mentioning earlier was the possible use of chlorine, if you have to disinfect the well. And that's.
That's the only reason you would?
That's the only reason you'd use it, yeah, it'd be to clean that system out and get that E. coli completely eliminated. And that goes all the way through all your house piping. Ran through this in, on the Metropoize River Valley Water Authority, and we had an E. coli issue with our water treatment plant that went through Fayette, Metropoize, and Marion, all three water systems. It took literally a month of chlorine in that water to get to the far ends of that system, to get enough chlorine out there to kill the bacteria before people could get that start, that boil. You heard the boiled water, water that they had in the three towns. And it took longer, depending on how far you were down the system. So the people who are the closest to the plant, they got to stop boiling water soonest. But the longer, further away you were, the longer it took for that to be effective.
But I mean, for me, listening to what I'm hearing, obviously I'm not an expert, but it seems like we're actually improving everyone. Even the people, if it's getting slightly closer, we're still improving their quality, based on the fact of the upgrade of the system.
That's our opinion, that the new system is providing superior treatment to what the old system did.
Yeah.
That was a pit system that was in there before, so again, a pit system goes down six feet down. So it's not getting that five feet or four feet of dry ground to percolate down through to get the cleaning effect of the bacteria that you give with a Title V system.
Okay, and Kevin had no issues with this?
No, I recommend for approval, given the situation over there. I was out there when they did the perk test, I saw the soils, and I understand there was some difficulty maybe in designing the system. But given the proximity of the existing seepage pit next to your well, sir, this is a market improvement, quite honestly. Not just the system itself and design, but its location. And to answer your question, Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Yeah, absolutely.
If you have any questions relative to well, well qualities, or safety, well treatment, we have information out of the Board of Health. You can certainly reach out to us. There's a lot of general guidelines on the internet, too. This area experienced, typically it's groundwater inundation and physical issues with the casings that cause the E. coli.
Yes.
It's not typically a septic system that does that. And in this neighborhood, when we had the floods back in two thousand and ten, there were many wells down there that needed to be treated, because they had groundwater, they had, excuse me, surface water, inundation.
Yeah.
Right, so everything that's in the lake, then up there, we better, so, but they were all successful in treating them with the chlorine. It's a relatively simple means of method of getting it done, and it's pretty effective also, okay? Sure. So yes, Mr. Chairman, I do recommend the variance be granted.
Thank you.
I do have one question, just a, a board of order. I see I have a copy of the two concern receipts. Was this the only two that we had sent out?
Yes.
The Title V says the affected parties.
Just wanted to make sure.
Do you have any questions, Debbie, anyone?
Nope.
Probably to close it, close the public hearing, right?
Yeah, all right, so with that, I will close the public hearing. And then I will entertain a motion to approve the variances as requested for ten Chavano Ave or septic system.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
We appreciate your time.
Nice to see you again.
Oh, still have to sign that. I've got, I have four copies, so I only need two, thank you. Thank you. So he can keep that one, all right? All right, so Luena, have you signed it?
Thank you. I appreciate it.
If I could, there's one more item I'd just like to briefly touch on.
Yep.
I know it's not on the agenda tonight, but just it's a matter of enforcement that we do here in town. From time to time, we will do undercover, if you will, inspections for tobacco compliance, not only with age, but with the flavored tobacco and all that goes along with it. We had one, we had, the town was inspected, and we had one violation. I know it's not on the agenda, so I'm gonna be, I will be brief and not specific. I'd like it put on the next.
Sorry, Alma.
Again, I just, to have it put on the next, the next agenda. I will forward you the information for your consideration before the next meeting, understanding that there are mandatory fines and suspension of licenses. And we'll get into greater detail with that, but I just wanted to let you know, you can get rest of things.
Thank you, Kevin, I really do appreciate it.
You're welcome. Do you folks have any questions for me?
On that topic, I'm sure we'll get into it next week.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave, thanks, Lou.
All right.
Over to you, buddy.
Thank you. All right, so next, we have the minutes from four twenty-five, twenty twenty-two, so I'll entertain a motion to approve those open session minutes.
Motion made.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item three is, there's a memo, the MOA for the Board of Health agent for annual uniform allowance, allowance in the amount of five hundred dollars. This is for boots, shirts, coats, and gloves. That seems reasonable to me. Any questions, any comments? So I'll entertain a motion to approve the annual uniform allowance in the amount of five hundred dollars for the Board of Health agent.
I'll make the motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item three is for the agreement between the town of Free Town and King Information Systems for the scanning of one hundred tax books and the total cost.
Twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand, yeah.
You approved the cost last meeting, and this is just for the agreement to be signed.
Okay, yep, that's right. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to approve this agreement.
Motion made.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on, we have the entertainment license for Profile Rock Inc. slash the Profile Tavern for twenty twenty-two. So this is for the, in the, so it's, in accordance with provision of chapter one forty, general laws, amendment, with amendment, sorry. So the entertainment would, a license will allow for hours of eight A. M. to two A. M. seven days a week for radio, television, amplifiers, phono instrumental music, four- to six-piece bands, including keyboards, strings, drum, brass, and vocal music, up to four persons in the upper lounge. Any concerns, comments?
No, it's in a gray area. I don't think, just the neighborhoods nearby or anything, up inside the county street, right?
Yeah.
Great location for it.
Yeah, I don't see an issue with it, and it's pretty specific, right? It's not like they're gonna have huge concerts based on what they're calling, or something.
And, yeah, that is, yeah. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the entertainment license for Profile Tavern.
Motion made.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, I don't think we have any reasons to open, reopen the annual town meeting or special town meeting, so we'll move on to item seven. So this is Green Collar Cannabis LLC's request to host a State Cannabis Control Commission require, required public awareness meeting virtually as opposed to in person?
You want to speak to this one a little bit?
So the, the state requires them to have, when they're applying for a marijuana permit, to have a public awareness meeting and, you know, meet with the public entertaining and of their concerns.
Yeah.
So they requested it to do virtual as opposed to in-person meeting. So I just think that's one of those things that the board can entertain either, or it doesn't matter on some level. I just, I'm just thinking it may be a better presentation in person, but it's really a judgment call.
Yeah, I don't, I don't understand what, are they saying, are they giving us a reason as to why?
Covid.
Yeah.
Which I, I mean, I don't really mind if it's, if it's virtual, as long as folks have the ability to ask questions.
You know, it's one of those, right, I think sometimes an in-person presentation is better. But then sometimes you get more people because of virtual meeting, they can attend, because they can be home with their children and still attend on a Zoom. So I, that's why I said I don't really have a personal preference. I thought, let the board decide, it's, it's just, I think it's just one of those things.
I mean, I guess they can, to your point, they can do both, right? Like, there's meetings that are held live with the ability for people to dial in, so if they're worried about Covid and, you know, you're not wanting to attend a meeting, you can still do that piece of it, so. I don't know.
Yeah, I agree. I like in-person meetings, you get more out of it, you can ask the questions to the individuals face-to-face. But same time, I, Zooms, you know, I've always been a big fan of Zooms the last few years, but same time, I get those concerns at that time. I prefer to see it in person.
All right, well, so I'll, I'll entertain a motion to allow them to do the virtual instead of the in-person, and, you know, so you just vote on it that way? So do I have that motion?
Yes. I turn a motion to both, make it virtually as opposed to in-person.
All right.
I guess I don't want, because it's not worded that it can be such for both, right? So if it was for both, then I would say I would go on.
No, I was just gonna, I was just gonna put out their vote, you can, you can just say no.
Yeah, well, then I'm gonna say no, because I don't want it to be just virtual.
You just don't, you just don't make the motion, and you, or you don't second it, it doesn't go any further.
Okay, sorry, I guess it's not gonna go any further. All right. So next is ambulance abavements in the, for April twenty twenty-two, in the amount of twenty-two thousand nine hundred thirty-two dollars and five cents. I'll entertain a motion to approve these abavements and write-offs.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on, we have the Community One Stop for Growth Grant application for funding the master plan. Debbie, this is your area of expertise.
Yeah, so there's a, there's a grant application, just, I thought it would be good for the board to sign that. I will be attaching a letter of support from the town administrator, and I'm asked one from the planning board, as well as from Serpent. The grant is asking for seventy-five thousand dollars from the state. It's asking for a match from the D. L. T. A. match from Serpent of forty thousand dollars. It is requiring in-kind of eight thousand dollars worth of employee hours, as well as a nine thousand two hundred dollar match from the town of Free Town, which, if our budget is approved, I will have the money within my budget to match that. It's, the total cost is roughly a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. So this is just one of those applications I feel strongly about, and that, I'm hoping that will get approved. So we're just looking for the support from the selectmen.
So out of the hundred and thirty-two thousand, we're responsible for less than ten thousand?
Yeah, less than actual cash and ten thousand, and then in-kind hours up to eight thousand, which will be myself, the planner, you know, the town planning tech, and various other employees within the town, yeah.
So do, what do you think, I guess, if they accept it, right? Is it, would it always just be the amount we asked for, or could they come back and say, okay, we'll give you forty-five?
They can always change it, but typically they don't, especially where we're providing a match, right? That just looks so much more like the town has committed, if we've committed funds to something like this.
That makes sense. And then how long, like, was the turnaround time from, you know, getting the application in and get, and actually getting the funds?
They're pretty quick with this stuff, you know, especially since it's gonna kind of be spearheaded through Serpent. That's where the D. L. T. A. money's coming in, and we'll be weighing heavily on them, probably to do the work, help us along with that. So it's, but it's a typical procurement procedure as well, you know? It's not like, okay, you get the money, you can just do it, I've gotta do all my steps in order to satisfy procurement because of the price tag.
Of course. All right, well, that's awesome, that's exciting. I really hope this works.
Yeah.
So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Community One Stop for Growth Grant application for funding the master plan.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Trevor, I think you need to go back to the seven, and so no vote was taken, basically.
Yeah.
I just need you guys to, to decide whether you're going to allow that. I mean, you can make a different motion to not, to, to motion to have, to have it in person, or you can make a motion to do a hybrid. I just need some.
Yeah, so I guess I'll entertain a motion to have a hybrid meeting, allow a hybrid meeting for, for the Cannabis Control Commission require public awareness meeting for Green Collar Cannabis.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I mean, if they come back to us and they have, you know, a really good reason, they'll talk about it.
And I don't even know that, you know, if they, you know, if they said they'd do it a certain way, that we have necessarily choose to say otherwise, but they asked the question, and so I figure we'll give them our answer and go from there.
Yeah, it's fine. Okay, now, Carlos kicking over you for personnel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, personnel aboard, we'll speak to agenda ten and eleven. The first will be the accept a resignation of Jeremy Bernardo as truck driver effective June first, two, twenty twenty-two. And number eleven, accept the resignation of Tim Dacey as Secretary Sexton effective five eleven, twenty twenty-two. I don't see no reason to deny these, after speaking with Tom Hall. So I can, a motion to approve these resignations for these two employees.
I'll make that motion.
All seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Moving along, this is myself as well, for Board of Parks Commission, discussion, possible action on following topics. So number twelve talks to updating, speaking to the update on staffing, please details kiosk implementation and for the beach and other boat items. So this is a little bit of a conversation, but we'll get through it. So staffing, recently we just had interviews, or interview, I should say, for staffing at the boat ramp. After the interview, it was determined that one individual cannot do the work of all the, all the work has to be done there. So we've not hired anybody on that, on the boat ramp. So that said, we're gonna rely heavily on the police, the police details, which should begin after the Memorial Day weekend, because that weekend we have the Lakeside Festival, so their police officers are detailed to that festival. And so really, the following weekends, when really we'll see the details show up at the boat ramp. And then, of course, we're working on the different boat ramp items with the state and locally here with our Board of Health and as well as the zoning, everything else, make sure we have proper rules set forth and put out so that all the boaters know the rules and regulations of the boat ramp. Some have changed, some stay, most of them stay the same, but we still need to put that out there and make sure everyone's aware. As far as the kiosk implementation, which is our long-term plan for paying for, you know, to launch your boat and park at the ramp, it's with the tax and treasure, and we're waiting for a merchant account with the state to make sure that that goes forward as needed. So we can't begin using it or even have it installed until that's done. So that's, that's a process, we're getting through it, and we'll just have to figure that out. Once, if the Memorial Day comes and you still don't have it, is there a secondary, maybe like a parks, drop your, your money, you get a ticket, put on windshield? So those are all, all options on the table to figure that out. Then we go over to the beach. So beach is kind of the same, you know, really how to staff it, how to make sure that that gate gets open and closed. So the discussion was had and made that we're gonna keep the beach closed until after June fifteenth, all right? And then that also talks to the Porter Johns that are supposed to go there, I think this weekend or next. So we're gonna hold off on the Porter Johns as well, make sure that, you know, it's not, they're not there if they're not being used. So, and that's just because, again, the details, the police details, and making sure that we have the proper coverage to utilize the boat ramp and the beach. So, because we don't have those in place yet, we have to push it forward, and pushing it forward a month, it was, it was the simplest thing to do, so.
So one of the things you did bring up, Carlos, was that you had one person who applied for the job, but then you also speak to opening and closing the gates. So are we gonna try and use this person for something, right, to some curiosity, to, because are we? The police officers now are gonna be in charge of opening and closing gates, and I don't know that they'll want to. So it's, I guess that's one of my questions, is we can, you know, the boat ramp's a little bit different, that there's no gate, but down there, have we, have we thought much about that?
So you're right, there are two different things to talk about, is the beach and the boat ramp gates, right? The first one being the beach, the idea is to open it up on June fifteenth, leave it on, right? Of course, we can close them as needed, at least second over, you know.
Yeah, yeah, I guess you really don't need to close them every night, so, so there you go, that's actually not a bad, bad way to look at it. And there's no, I don't think there's any, I'm trying to envision it, but I don't think there's any gates down at the boat ramp, and so that shouldn't be any issues. Boy, and there's no.
Well, there's a chain, there's a chain there.
There's a chain that if you have staff on site, when the, all the parking spaces are full, the instruction is to close it.
So while we have the detail, you're right, I'm, I highly doubt that the police are gonna wanna open and close that chain. So that's, that's a moving target at this point, until we get actual staff in place. And that might be something we add to another agenda as far as getting staff for that area, right? That is just more than part-time, maybe a full-time staffer that's attached to the department, maybe attached to the transfer station or something. That way, that person can be a full-time employee, in a sense, but also be detailed to different areas throughout the year, so that way, we get more applicants to actually work the facilities. Right now, what we've seen is, we put it out there, we raised the per-hour rate. So that way, we get more applicants to uh actually work the facilities. Right now, what we've seen is we put it out there, we raised the, the per hour rate. I think once or maybe twice at this point, and, you know, we had two call, two no calls, no shows for interviews, you know, right? So we really gotta start thinking outside the box, and again, I think probably the best solution is adding someone that does multiple things. In town within a department, and maybe that will entice people to apply for it. So, until that.
Yeah, that's something we'll have to think about, right, that's tough, it's, you know, this, you have, you think of, okay, to your point, transfer station, but we need additional hours at the transfer station throughout the summer.
Right.
Right, so that doesn't really help, so I guess there's, there's no simple solution that to say right now, but I, I get where you're going with that.
Yeah, something for a, a future discussion, um cuz we do these solutions not just for today or tomorrow, but next week, next month, next year, this is gonna continue to happen. So, long-term solution is better than a quick Band-Aid here and there.
Absolutely.
So, food for thought.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
That's it from Boards of Parks Commission.
Alright, thank you.
Yes, Selectman Loaks, did you, do you wanna vote and ask the board if they want to keep the beach closed? Cuz it's generally scheduled to open Memorial Day weekend, to ask them to keep it closed to, and we, we discussed maybe June fifteenth, just to make sure that that's um solidified with a vote.
Sure, um, you know, you're right, it's, decision was made, uh uh, you know, meetings that were, that were having occurred over the past few weeks. Based on the, the information that that was, you know, gathered as far as interviews and everything else. So, that said, you know, it's two weeks, so it was, right, two weeks, fifteen days, Memorial Day on the thirtieth, correct?
Yeah, I guess.
The twenty-ninth and the thirtieth, yeah.
That's a, a kind of a valid point that Debbie brings up, because we're gonna keep it closed on people, but we're really affecting people for a couple of weekends, yeah.
Well, you can still get there, you, it's not gonna stop you from getting past those two iron gates.
Yeah, so then, then we might as well just open them.
Prior to the fifteenth?
Yeah.
But by opening them, we'll also be, then we require to add Porter Johns and everything else.
Right, right, that's a pretty small price to pay. You know, we wanna do right by the residents, and then it's a holiday weekend, and we're telling the residents they can't go down there, or they can go down there, but we're not giving them facilities to use. Yeah.
Yeah, uh like I said, this is a discussion that was, was put out there. Just trying to make the best determination as far as the facts that are concerned, you know, so whether we keep it or close it. It's, it's um, we still need answers for tomorrow.
Yeah, so, I agree.
So that's, are we taking a vote on date, or?
Well, well, I guess the discussion has to be made, if we take a vote on it, are we keep, are we gonna keep it open starting Memorial Day, or we keep it closed until the fifteenth? What are your thoughts on it? You know, I, I, Jared's point, right, to, he, we, we definitely discussed the residents' needs and everything else, and we don't wanna deprive them of anything. Um, whether it's restrooms or access to the beach, it was just more of a discussion that was had was, well, if we don't have anybody there to open and close those gates. You know, to minimize the, the amount of details from the police officers, right, to go in there on a, whatever basis that we determine. Was that the best use of um the funds available at the time?
But your point was also that, you know, the gate's closed, but they can get around it.
Correct.
So. And then also that we don't need to open and close it every night and morning, so I think that just having the one time open, leave it open, have the Porter Johns there. And allowing our residents, because it is for residents only, to go down there. Then that's what makes the most sense to me, because then you have a holiday weekend and then the residents are allowed to go. Um, the boat ramp obviously is, it's a different idea, that's a little bit different, but the, the beach, I actually, the more I think about it, the more I would rather have it open for what it's known, when it's known, you know.
Sure, yeah, and I, again, you, right, keep it open, and then it's for residents only, that's the, that's the, you know, the rub, residents only. Police details would be there to enforce the residents' portion of it, and right now, we don't have that schedule or the yeses and nos based on that, so. That, that tied into it, what keeping it closed, cuz there's no way of enforcing residents only.
Yeah, yeah, I know, but I, I think the overall.
It's a tough one, yeah, it wasn't, it's.
Yeah, it's an easy decision, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so. If wanna keep it open till the fifteenth, or, or on Memorial Day, yeah, on F-four.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um. So, I just wanna give you all the facts to, to go around it.
Yeah, I mean, so. We'll take a vote there somewhere, right? Or, or if we don't vote, is it, is it gonna open like it, would it have always opened?
I, I would say it would, just based on, you know, that's usually what I think probably the signs even say, it's open from Memorial Day to. Um, Labor Day, and it would be a typical thing, like if there was an issue that you needed to close the beach, right, you let everybody know, that's why I was like. It's something that I think you take the vote, you let everybody know that the town beach is closed until set, a date certain. Because of staffing issues or, you know what I mean, um, if you open it, you have the issues of, you know, no way of police. We will have police details, uh we have ordered them, we just don't know if they're gonna be, it's gonna be tough on that Memorial Day weekend, but we will have them. Um, there just won't be any staffing to check stickers and keep people out and have some of the issues that we had last year, right, with businesses be trying to run out of there. But I, I just, I think it's something that it should be a, a, a vote from the board uh about what you do with it, and. I just, I think the issue is really, it, even though it's nice out, right, the water's not warm, so a lot of people are not gonna be using the beach the first couple of weeks of June, kids are still in school. Um, and that gives us a couple more weeks to possibly look for staffing, right, if, it, because this is, we, we have, we're having a really hard time finding staffing. So that was, that was the thought behind that, but um, it's, like, again, it, it, I think it should be a, a vote either way.
Yeah, I like the idea of voting, cuz it keeps it clean.
Okay, well, um, we'll be voting on, right, so are we opening it or closing it? Or keeping it closed, that's, I guess, to uh entertain the motion. What, what's the?
So it's a, entertain a motion to keep the boat, uh um boat ramp closed to June fifteenth, there's gotta be a motion, I think.
Okay, I, um, I entertain a motion to keep the, the beach closed until June fifteenth.
I'll make the motion.
A second. Why can't you create a second motion?
No, don't second it.
Yeah. If Jared did second it, so.
Jared did or did not?
Did not.
Okay, so that motion fails and there needs to be another motion, or, or no motion and just leave it alone and opens on Memorial Day weekend.
So I guess that's what's gonna happen.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Are you still gonna, soon as open up and?
Open it, as just planned.
Alright. Okay. Next, we will, I think you're all set there, Carlos, right?
Uh, yeah.
Alright, thank you. Okay. Um, next we'll be going to executive session. You'll be returning back into open session, I should, public hearing after that. Um, we'll be going to executive session for the following reason. Um, pursuant to general law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one A-seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant. Um, in aid requirements. To uh open meeting law to review for consideration of release, the executive session meeting, um, committing conveniences for the following executive session. Meeting uh dates listed in attachment A, there's a ton of them, I don't have to read, so is that what you are? Right, I, am I thinking of the right things?
Yeah.
Yeah, so. With that, entertain a motion to go to executive session?
M- motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright, foes.
Selectman Loaks?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Alright, so we're back in open session, um, next we have a public hearing, so. Freetown Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing relative to an application submitted by Excel Recycling LLC for sale of second-hand furniture and merchandise license for a business located at seventeen Rich Hill Road in Sonnet. The hearing will be conducted at seven PM on Monday, May sixteen, at twenty twenty-two at the Police Station Community Room, fifteen Willow Drive, East Freetown, Mass. Um, I think as most guys are aware, we're gonna continue this to May thirty-first, twenty twenty-two at six PM, so I will. Sorry, no, six PM.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Six PM, that was, it was gonna be seven. So I'll entertain a motion to continue this public hearing uh to May thirty-first, twenty twenty-two at six PM at the Police Station Community Room located at fifteen Willow Drive, East Freetown, Mass.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Now, out of the public hearing for now, but it's continued. Um, next is general item sixteen, um, this is discussion and vote whether to approve the release of the executive session minutes with reductions to fulfill the public um records request. Um, I will entertain a motion to approve the release of the executive session minutes.
Motion made.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I think that is all we have today. Um, anything, town administrator?
No, I think that's it for today.
Okay, so um with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.